All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a second? Second from Cindy. Any additions, corrections, deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Public input and announcements. Did you want to say anything tonight?
Yes. Charlie Barker and my children go to school here at Shrewsbury Elementary School. And one thing that we have noticed since they started at the beginning of the year is that the playground equipment is in a state of disrepair. Thankfully, Mrs. Semenetti has got a plan together to make it safer. But if you do get an opportunity, and today is not a great day for it, to walk around the playground, there's a lot of pieces that the children can't use that are taped off and pieces that are falling off. So in talking to Brian.
Brian.
I'm going to go talk to the grounds committee in that meeting, but I just wanted to bring that up for public comment that we would like to have the support of the school board to help us with this playground and maybe bring it up to a better condition. Get some new equipment. I'm speaking for my wife who's on the PTO, Melissa Barker, and they're doing some fundraising efforts to try to help that along, but we'd like the support of the school board to help us figure out how to make this a better environment for our children.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Can I make two announcements real quick?
Absolutely.
Instead of waiting till transact other legal business, I figured these were fitting announcements, too. I was sharing with Personnel Committee, we don't have this contract in front of us tonight, but we do have a bus driver hire in the pipeline, so that'll be coming over the summer, which I think is good news. And I spoke to you, and Jody spoke a little bit to you, about a grant we had put in for that was a competitive grant to address mental health. We were awarded that grant. Actually, did we get the notification today?
Conditionally approved, pending making the changes that we made.
Which is great, because that will allow us to pull on additional personnel to specifically support mental health needs across the district and at no cost to our taxpayers. That would be a two-year plan for that grant, so.
As well, sorry, as a three-year support for that sixth to seventh grade transition program that we had grant funded years ago and then had to go away, where the sixth graders all get to do activities, all four schools together, so that they started to bond before seventh grade.
Thank you, the grant writers.
Awesome, thank you. Is there any additional public input? Hearing none, we will move along to Board Discussion of Public Comments.
So I would like to know, do we have ESER money to address Mr. Barker? Mr. Barker's concern?
ESER money would be hard to use. What Charlie and I were discussing a little bit was the Buildings and Grounds Meeting next week on Tuesday, where Tim is bringing a five-year plan. And I think our funding that we've been asking our taxpayers, hey, do we want to put funding in our building fund versus do we want to use that surplus to pay our taxes down? Our voters have supported us in putting funding in our building funds. And I think working that into our five-year plan is probably the best way to come up with that dollar amount for funding. You know, we saw, what, two meetings ago, maybe, the Tinmouth slide?
It was Clarendon.
Clarendon slide, yeah. Clarendon was lucky that they had some local funding that they could cover the slide, but you remember how much that was. So to redo the, to do any substantial work here, I think getting that on the five-year plan and accessing a larger pot of money makes sense. It's incredible that the PTO is trying to support and raise funds there. There might be some little things we could do along the way. ESER is a great thought, but everything, as far as ESER funding goes, that's actually a great question so that everybody's on the same page. We no longer have the ability to change how we're using the great majority of our ESER funding. There's a little bit that we could look at for next year and we could try to modify that plan. The requirements for modifying that plan are very high. So I think looking at existing funding that we have in our building funds is probably an easier avenue. The ESER funding, too, we would have to identify a way that updating the playground was connected to COVID somehow, which might be hard to do. So while a great thought, I think it's going to be harder to access. The timeline for changing what we're going to use that funding for is coming real, the deadline's coming real, real fast. So I think even if we tried, we'd be hard pressed to make that work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thing they want to bring up? All right, moving along. Approval of minutes from May 31, 2023, regular and special. So do I hear a motion to approve the regular minutes from May 31?
I'm not sure if I was there, but I can still make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second's one. Was there any corrections to the minutes?
Bullet 10, that's the technology bid. It's already a lengthy bullet. I just want to make sure that we've fully documented. I know it has a section in here that says, discussion showed long-term plans for renewal of the 17K yearly. Is that clear enough for the lengthy discussion that we had?
What number is that?
Bullet 10.
Is there something missing that you think needs to be added?
I know we had a lengthy discussion on how it was going to be covered year over year, the expense of digital fees. And then there was also a section that I don't see in here, which is, it alludes to the coordination between high school and elementary schools, but we didn't cover having somebody in to make a presentation on, hey, we've never done this before, but this is the new social studies curriculum. There's not a bullet for that.
Yes, I would say we had a lot of discussion and we didn't land on anything necessarily for some of those.
I just want to make sure it's fully captured in the notes. Before we say, hey, these are the notes. Signed, initialed.
I think we could add something that says there was a request for a presentation on the social studies curriculum. The first part, I don't, you know, we talked a lot around potential funding possibilities and long-term plans, but we did, there's no, there's no set plan for all of the funding.
It answers my question. If we reflect back on it six months, 12 months from now, how much of it do you retain?
Can I just add that? So my takeaway, if I'm remembering correctly, was that, you know, we were excited as a board to have this, what was it, K-8 social studies curriculum? And we had, I believe it was ESER money to pay for one year of digital access to resources, but we were concerned about longer-term funding.
Yes, correct.
So I agree with Nick that it's important that that be captured in minutes. So just, just for the sake of that being in our minutes.
We can add that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other changes, additions? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That's unanimous.
So all in favor of?
Of the minutes with the change. With the additions brought forth by Nick Flanders.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Now we need to approve the minutes from the special.
I'll make that motion.
Did anybody need a copy of that? I know that was a.
It was sent later.
Just making sure.
And do I have a second? Liz, thank you. Do we have any corrections, additions, deletions? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And I am going to not vote because I was not present. I forgot about it, so. Other than that, it is, it passes with one extension. Shrewsbury update.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being back at Shrewsbury. The last time you guys were here, it was blustery and snowy outside, and we did a little tour of the inside of the building. And I promised you we'd be able to do the grounds tonight, but the weather did not cooperate. So I have some really great photos in my slideshow tonight, just to talk to you a little bit about the priority that Shrewsbury has on sustainability and outdoor learning. So this is just a little presentation I put together just to talk you through. We are the Sustainability School up here. I call it the Miracle in the Mountains. We have 76 students here, and there's a whole bunch that happens inside these walls and outdoors on the campus. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about five different aspects of Shrewsbury Mountain School. The first being academic excellence, our garden and our orchard projects that are going outside on campus, how we reuse, recycle, and compost, our priority of outdoor learning, and the partnerships that we have with our community members. This is our, like, our mission is to build a foundation for lifelong learning in a global world, and this is our definition of sustainability. Sustainability means to act in a way that shows awareness of how all things are connected and to empower people to make well-considered choices for the current and future environmental, economic, and social needs of our communities. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about academic excellence. We have a powerhouse team of educators up here at Shrewsbury Mountain School. We have all multi-age classrooms here, except for grade two. It's our only single standalone class. And our teachers pride themselves on really being able to meet students where they're at and then being able to challenge them to really be able to achieve things that they didn't think were possible. And so our teachers have been applying our new curriculums in math and ELA, and we've been seeing really strong success as students increase their achievement in both of these areas. Our teachers have dove into our new training with Bookworms, and all of my teachers have signed up for the summer training on that, and we've been doing some new work with Eureka Math. Science and social studies are also a huge passion of our teachers up here, and what's really cool is they often will work together, and they like to take a common theme and then use that thread to weave through into all of their subject areas. So I know that our third and fourth graders were talking about, like, the progression of a bug's life, and they were writing about it, and they were doing science experiments about it, and they were doing outdoor learning, all with this thread of learning about the life cycle of a bug. So it's really cool. We also have all of our special area classes up at Shrewsbury, art, health, library, music, and PE. And our teachers are super great about giving extended learning opportunities, kind of in these passion areas, that our students are able to kind of have a break from the regular classroom environment and then pursue learning in another environment that these teachers are the experts in. And it's really, really great. So we have these really cool garden and orchard projects. If you parked in the lower parking lot, our garden is right on the end of that. It's fenced in. We've been working together with the Sage organization from Shrewsbury, which you'll hear a little bit more about later. They've been building us raised beds. There's a large, like, structure that we call the compost shed, and we just got our hemlock boards delivered today from Gannion Lumber, and we're going to be creating compost bins that are going to create soil for our garden. There's lots of plans, and everything's kind of, with COVID, things slowed down. All this kind of started when Jody was up here as Shrewsbury principal, and now we're ramping everything back up, trying to get back on track with our goals. So here's some pictures. So on the left, you have Cara Fitzgerald, who is the owner of Evening Song Farm, doing some seedlings with our pre-K. You have Gary Salmon, who is, he just passed away, who's been in our town forever. This was the last planting project of chestnut trees that he planted right up here at the edge of our walking circle just this past November. He's such a special human. And these are our students digging holes and planting chestnut trees. And this is Scott Purcell in the raised beds of our gardens. All this outdoor learning happens while we're here at Shrewsbury. This is Ryan with some pre-Kers looking through soil and trying to make sure they have nutrients. This is a hole for one of our chestnut trees, and this actually is a tree. It's like in the shadow of his hand in the sun, but that's the root structure for our chestnut tree. And they all survived, except one, over the winter. We have amazing partners to make this happen, because I have many talents and gifts, but planting and gardening and tending to an orchard is something I'm learning right along with the kids. So we are partnered with the Sage organization. They've been doing sustainability planning, garden planting, composting work with us. They hooked us up with this incredible organization called Retree Us, and our orchard that's between our field and walking circle and the playground is all fruit trees. And every single class got to plant a different fruit tree in the orchard this past October. And then right up here on North Shrewsbury Road is Jockey Hill Farm, and they are the partners that worked with us with our chestnut trees. Reuse, recycle, and compost. So it's something that the kids just automatically do. It's just part of our routines here at Shrewsbury. I have a couple little graphics for you. So we always use as much as possible our reusable cafeteria tray and reusable silverware that's washed and cleaned and reused. We recycle all of our paper. We compost and feed local pigs with our food scraps. And then this is that big structure that the compost bins are going to be built where we're going to be able to produce soil eventually for our garden. Outdoor learning. We have so many ways that we're able to learn outside, but one of the really exciting ways is we have outdoor classrooms. So Ms. Bonifine is an art, incredible kindergarten and first-grade teacher, and this is just one little portion of this circle that she has of stumps that students get to sit on. They have a fire ring. They have trails to explore, and this is her teaching a lesson in the outdoor classroom in the forest, right beyond our playground in the back of our school campus. We have two outdoor classrooms. We also have this really great project that Ms. McDonough, our fifth and sixth-grade teacher, does every single year, where they raise trout from hatch to release. And they take this field trip up above Pierce's store, and they release these trout into the stream that go down into the Mill River. And it's a really great, huge life cycle and science part of the curriculum. Great way to get outside. We also have awesome community volunteers. I know that there's some volunteers. We were a training hub here at Shrewsbury. A few Thursdays a month, we had all kinds of community volunteers that were doing outdoor, like, nature lessons and science lessons outside. So we were like a training facility for many different schools in the area, and then we also have community members that come in, and they usually teach classes by grade level. They can be inside, they can be outside. Sometimes the nature is brought in, sometimes the nature is just enjoyed in our outdoor environment. That's Ellie Wilson showing them stuff in the woods. One of our community members. And we couldn't do it without the incredible partnerships in Shrewsbury. We have, like, this amazing town that, like, you pick up the phone and they are just there to help you with support. And so these are the four ways that we get the most support for our school right now. I'm constantly looking for ways to build new relationships with people in town. But our Sage organization, which stands for Shrewsbury Agricultural Education and Arts Foundation, we have Stephen Abatiel and Scott Purcell. They have been working with us all along, and they're from Sage, and they've been helping us with planting, growing, composting, harvesting, and they've been doing cooking, we're planning to do a cooking unit every month with what they're harvesting out of the garden. We've also partnered this year with Shrewsbury Conservation Commission. They sponsored Michael Caduto, who's a huge, like, nature specialist and a poet and a musician, and we did two all-school assemblies, one geared towards younger ages, pre-K to second grade, and one session that was geared towards older ages, third grade through sixth grade, and they learned songs, and they talked about different aspects of nature and Native American culture. It was fabulous. And then we also worked together so that I could host the event here in this big multipurpose room, where the Shrewsbury Conservation Commission bought all of the building supplies and pre-cut and made, like, kits for every family, every kid. Cindy was there. Every kid with their parents in every family got to build their own bluebird box. And they were able to pay a bird expert to come and talk about, like, their songs and their mating rituals and their nesting rituals and how they are able to just attract these bluebirds to their own backyards. And every kid got to walk out with their own bluebird box. And it was this great community event on a Saturday. Jockey Hill Farm also sponsored our chestnut trees, which are on the outer perimeter of our walking trail over by the hill. And Tim Stout is the person who helped us with that, along with Gary Salmon, and he's also teaching our students about the American Forest Foundation's Family Forest Carbon Program, which is basically about planting trees to get our air to be much, much cleaner and breathable and sustainable long term. And lastly, and most importantly, we partner with our families. So this year's been super exciting, because I've been able to meet every single family and know every single student by name, and we really build relationships with our families, and we invite them to volunteer and support our sustainability goals and just supporting students being successful at school. Here's some more, like, little pictures. Like, that's another chestnut tree that's going in the ground, and this is a little four-year-old who's looking at bugs in a jar. And that's it. If you have more questions and you want to talk to me more, or if you want to get a tour when the sun is shining of campus, you're welcome here anytime. I would love to talk more about what's happening at Shrewsbury, but I just want to kind of bring us back to the fact that that's kind of the thing that makes us different as an elementary school out of the all-four elementary schools in our district, and thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
I always have questions.
I love questions.
So I have questions about, when were the fruit trees planted?
They were planted in October.
When are they expected to have fruit?
Not for probably, like, these kiddos that planted these trees, they'll probably be graduating Mill River before we're, like, really harvesting fruit from them.
Okay, and what about the chestnut trees?
The chestnut trees are super baby. They're really, they're like one little teeny stuff, but all of them lived except one. They're actually still protected with a plastic sleeve out there right now. Tim Stout is supposed to be coming up just in the next few weeks, because he didn't want the deer to get them in their very, very baby state. But I know that he was expecting to really get shade from those trees and have them to be able to sustain, the chestnut trees are more for sustaining wildlife, not for sustaining humans, and so he was thinking five to six years before he would get chestnuts that would be able to sustain wildlife. So this is for the long term.
I love it.
So comment and then a question. It's all fantastic. I like that you get them all up and moving. They're not stuck in a classroom all day, because I know being stuck in an office all day is like, so it's good to get them up and moving and about, and it's all well-rounded. So it's fantastic. The second grade, is that because of the class size, or is it always second grade is stationary, one class?
You know, I don't think it's been that way forever, but I think that personally, when me walking through it for the first time this year, I love that second grade is kind of this little moment for the teacher to focus on a smaller class, because when they transition to that third and fourth grade classroom, they're required to be so much more independent. They're expected to be able to really write on their own, be able to kind of read at a higher level of comprehension. And so it just seemed to fit academically for us, to do three and four-year-olds together and then K-1 together, and then have this transition. And then the third and fourth grade has been, like, on fire this year. They're so excited. They wrote argumentative essays to the PTO vying for changes to field games, and I presented all of the argument essays to PTO, and three of their suggestions were taken for Tuesday's Field Day, and we got to honor them in front of the PTO and clap for them that they were able to argue to get their way. And so they're really on fire. So I think it's this really great transition. I would like to see it continue that way. I think that in the past, it might have been because of the class numbers, but it seems to fit really well. Jody, can you speak to how many years it's been just second or second grade?
So that started in the second calendar year of COVID, so it would have been '21, '22. And that was because we were concerned about, you know, taking your way back. We were worried about keeping the most amount of children separate we could so that they weren't crossing over. And so Julia and Erin sat down and said, well, this is how we want to re-separate it for now. And then coming out of COVID, once kids could move classrooms and mix around again, they said, actually, this is working pretty good, and we want to keep them.
Academically, it just seems to really flow well here. Great comment, though, like, why randomly second grade? Any other questions?
Well, I just, I, it's funny, because like, everybody assumes, like, at least my people that don't live in Vermont, they assume our kids are just, like, outside and playing all the time, and it's true for our kids, my kids, but so many kids aren't doing that. And so it's like, it's great to just be able to do the simple little things. Like, in Tinmouth, like, we go and help them plant their garden, and it's like, the kids are so excited about it, and it's like, just being able to do stuff that isn't just a year and watching the trees grow with the kids, I think, is really great.
Yeah, we're talking also about each class, like, in that developmental age level, of doing specific roles. So as they get older, they can take on more responsibilities. So like, our fifth and sixth graders are really going to be spearheading our compost, and then they're going to be leading the rest of the school through that process, because they're developmentally ready to do something that advanced. And so they also, the building that culture of, like, I'm in kindergarten, I see my fifth and sixth graders getting our compost ready to put in our garden, and I'm going to get to do that when I get that old, and kind of build that culture of excitement. I think it's really also important, just to leave you with this last thought, that the Shrewsbury Mountain School teachers are so good at what they do, and I think that sometimes comments are made, like, well, all you do is learn about nature, or you only learn outside. And they're so committed to student success in all of their academic areas. So they were like, could you just let everybody know, we do math in ELA, too? You know, so I just want to make sure that you guys.
Now, if I can add to that, I think there is incredible power in students doing work that is authentic. So they're not learning how to write in a room that all they do is writing. They're writing argumentative essays to bring to the PTO and present, and something actually happens because of that. That's what we want our students to do when they go off into the world. That's engaged citizens. They know how to write in a way where they can interact with school boards or with local boards or with, you know, the governor's office, things like that. I think our students are far more engaged in that academic learning because it's connected to all the other things that we're doing. So I think not only are our teachers doing incredible work with academics, they're doing it in a way that's far more powerful than just, let's memorize our multiplication tables. Yeah, you got to know that stuff, but if you're using it in a very authentic way, you're going to learn it better and remember it better. So huge testament to what our teachers do.
Question. Is there anywhere, is it documented, like, the year that the trees were planted, who they were planted by? Just because sometimes, like, when all these kids are graduated, you know, they can come back and be like, oh, look, like, it's still here, or, you know, we planted that.
So like, our third graders were asking the tree specialist with Retree, or us, like, when are we going to be able to eat pears off this tree? And he was like, well, maybe when you're graduating from high school, you could come back to the Shrewsbury campus. And I was like, that's such a good idea! And so I have a whole photo, like, in the sense that, like, I've digitally kept track of everything, but it's really good for me to, like, create a journal and so to maybe track our progress. So thank you so much for that suggestion, because I think that's a really good idea. But I'd love to get our Shrewsbury alumni coming back from high school and being able to kind of be with the class doing that first harvest. I think that would be a really powerful and beautiful thing. We have so many Shrewsbury students that are studying at Mill River now, and so when you have siblings, like, we have the Severi family that has twins that just graduated last Wednesday, but they also have a third grader, and they were like, to see, they've gotten to see the whole spectrum from, like, pre-K at Shrewsbury all the way to their children graduating. And so it's like, really, they're like, we're so happy with how everything progresses here at our district, and it's really exciting to see.
Are there plans to maybe dedicate the orchard to the gentleman who helped, who passed away?
You know what? The chestnut trees on this side are the trees that, that would be, that's a beautiful idea. I should definitely reach out about that. No one has reached out to me about that yet. I wanted to talk to Tim, because Gary and Tim work together, but they're not from the same organization, but he's going to be coming up to remove the protective coatings from the chestnut trees. It's a perfect opportunity to talk to him about that. Great suggestion.
Anyone else? Well, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Next would be Board Education Strategic Planning.
So we had set, or we had tentatively talked about at our last meeting, July 22, 9 to 12, retreat. So I think we put this back on here just so we wouldn't lose track of that and we would keep that in our minds. If we will talk about. we would keep that in our minds. If we will talk about, we'll talk about July meetings when we do our agenda building. The 20, no matter what happens, there's going to be another board meeting before the 22nd. I think the agenda building, the agenda building for that will be simple enough because it's strategic planning. And Andrea and I can put our heads together, maybe pull Matt into that, too. Are folks still comfortable with July 22nd, nine to 12, being a retreat focused on strategic planning?
Yeah, that's what works for me. It's in my calendar, too.
Great. Now, we had talked a little bit about location. The Grange was brought up, thinking about breakfast. You know, I, we could do our conference room and, you know, still bring breakfast items if we wanted to do that, too. I know George Ambrose made a mean pancake and the kitchen was great for that. Anybody have a strong sense one way or the other?
I think just to Len's point about how we do these remotes, just having it be in the conference room, just in case somebody can't come, but could be hybrid. I think that makes sense. I'll be glad to make muffins or something.
I was gonna say, we can bring food anywhere.
Yeah.
And with George not around, I don't know that we have a connection with the Grange anymore.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. So 22nd, nine to noon, we'll start getting an agenda together for that. It'll be fairly simple because it will just be strategic planning. We had also tentatively talked about August 12th, doing another nine to 12, so that we could have some dedicated time and make sure that we're going into the school year having that done. So if we spend those two sessions doing goal setting, then we roll into the year thinking about, do we have a board education piece we want to pick up? When are we going to get to reflecting on our goals? You know, maybe October, November, December, checking in on, hey, we set these goals. How are we doing? Does that all sound good, tentatively?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Moving along to tax anticipation.
You can anticipate them.
Thank you, Uncle Sam.
You can anticipate the interest rate, too. Probably.
Okay, I requested a tax anticipation note from our bank, which is MNT, for the upcoming school year. Basically, what a tax anticipation note does is that it bridges the gap between the start of the school year and when we get the bulk of our property tax revenue from the towns. And that usually occurs sometime in early November, where we will get, you know, the bulk of the tax revenue. So we were requesting a six-month line of credit from July to December. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, we would expect a little bit more higher interest rate than what we've seen over the past 10 years. And we definitely saw that it's up to, you know, 5.91% is what they're proposing for this upcoming year. You know, putting that in context, you know, last year, you know, we paid $12,000 in interest. If we did the same, same timeframe and the same amount of credit, line of credits for this upcoming year, that interest amount would be about $50,000. So what we'll try to do is try to limit, you know, limit the timeframe where we keep that open. You know, we try to close it down in the earliest in November that we can. Usually we start to see a need for it in early September, when, you know, the, when the school staff gets back, where the payroll has become much better. So we'll try to, I mean, we can hit, we can hit, what we'll try to do is hit our budget number, which our budget number, which we knew it would go up, but it was $30,000. So it's still not going to quite fit for six months, but hopefully it can fit for maybe three, three and a half months of keeping the line of credit open. And hopefully paying that off and staying under budget. So what I need from the board is, you know, is a resolution to, to, that the Board of School Directors, on behalf of the Mill River Unified Union School District, borrow on a line of credit up to $3.2 million from MNT Bank, at an interest rate of 5.91%. The note is dated July 5th, 2023, and payment, final payment is due the 29th day of December 2023. And also to authorize the business manager and the district treasurer to have the authority to request advances under the line of, line of credit, but given no other authority beyond
I'd like to make that motion.
I can make that motion. Do I need to restate it? I did sort of write it down.
I kind, that's what I've done in the past, is kind of read it.
Okay, thank you. I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Any questions before we go ahead and vote? Hearing none. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Now, I have, I have it to be signed by the board. There's, there's three spots. Doug, you get the pleasure of signing as a clerk on two of the pages.
We need to authorize that.
One sad.
That one won't have a clerk, but the other two will.
So we just sign as a board member?
And the other two sign as a board member and a clerk.
And do you need another signature on that before we leave tonight?
Just, just all the board members.
All of the board members.
All the board members.
Okay.
This one works better if you want that one.
There'll be three pages.
There's three of them. There's three of them. I gotta add mine, too.
Well, you might as well stay up here because next would be fuel oil bid.
Basically, on the fuel oil bids, you only have a 24-hour window to, to accept it. So we got the bids in this afternoon. I did send out an email to people. If you need a copy of that summary, I can give it to anybody that might want it.
I have an email, so we're good.
First one would be on the number two fuel oil, which is the home heating oil. We sent that out to, you know, local companies. And some of them, I think, have gotten discouraged by our longtime vendor, which has been Champlain Valley Oil. They seem to be quite a bit under everybody else through bidding season. So they kind of lost interest in bidding on it because they just can't compete. But we did get our usual two bids on that. One was from Champlain and one was for Irving. And they were very extremely close. As you can see, there's only basically a $600 difference in, in the cost of the, of the two bids. Champlain did their bid a little bit differently. They kind of did it the old way, which we used to see in the past, you know, a tractor trailer rate for the high school and then the, a little higher rate for the elementary schools. So they broke their bid out into two prices, $2.75 a gallon for the high school and the elementary schools, Shrewsbury, Timotham, Wallingford, were at $2.80. And so the total, total cost of that bid was $52,740. Irving bid just one price, $2.799, and that came in at $53,320.95. So almost a $600, $600, a little higher than what Champlain's bid was. Like I said, Champlain's been our vendor for numerous, numerous years now. They're very, very easy to work with. Tim just worked with them this year and, you know, he was highly impressed with how, how easy it is to communicate with them to get things, get things delivered. So he was hoping that, you know, he would support if they came in at the lowest bid, and which they did by 600. So our recommendation would be to recommend accepting the Champlain bid at $2.75 for the high school and $2.80 for the Schumer, Shrewsbury, Timotham, and Wallingford Elementary
I do have one question.
Yes.
Is there a reason that Clarendon Elementary School is not listed?
They will be on the propane, they would be on the propane.
There's no oil there?
Propane, no.
Okay.
Wallingford, actually, is strictly propane, too. But there's still that trailer there that has some usage.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So.
I can make that motion. So I move that we accept the bid from Champlain Valley at $2.75 for the high school and $2.80 for Shrewsbury, Timotham, and Wallingford for number two fuel oil.
Second from Cindy. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor? That's unanimous.
How that compares to, just how that compares to budget that we had for next year, we were, at the time, estimating it to be a lot higher. So there will be, you know, a savings of about $28,500 in savings on, on the fuel oil, in the budget. The next part is the diesel. Nobody wants, nobody wants to give you a fixed price on diesel. We, in 12 years I've been here, we got one bid and that company got burned by it because diesel prices went on, out of, you know, up to $6. And our fixed price was $2.66. Never ever seen it then. Never see it again, probably. But we did get two variable quotes. Champlain did Valero Rutland rack plus 12 cents. Irving did Daily Argus rack plus 46 cents. What that means, you know, depends upon the day. So either A, last year, we did not approve anybody. We just left it up to the facility director to call both places. Tim ended up calling, ended up using Champlain because they were always lower. And he, and again, like you said, he grew accustomed to using them. Just for an example, I asked Irving what that would mean today's pricing, his price, they said the price would be $2.82 today if we had accepted it based on their bid. Tim had actually, is getting a delivery this week from Champlain. Their price this week was $2.66. So, so we don't have to, you know, accept the bid. My recommendation would be to accept Champlain based on past history and ease of, and, and the service. But again, I'll leave that up to the board. But my recommendation would be to accept it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is kerosene the same as diesel?
No.
No? Okay.
Kerosene is a, diesel is, is straight fuel oil. Kerosene can, normally gets mixed with diesel, especially in the wintertime, so it doesn't congeal. Fuel oil will congeal at about, about four or five degrees or so, and it'll, it'll solid up. So they, they mix it, they call it a winter, winter mix.
Oh, they put kerosene in the, in the regular fuel oil?
Normally, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
And if there's a tank outside, like I'm saying, he probably has a tank in the farm, so he's got the, you know, and you have to do that there. You don't have to do it so much in the basement because there's a temperature there. And usually, it's a little more efficient for having some of that, even though you pay more to put it there, it actually costs you a little less for operation. The fuel oil will have a density that will smoke a little bit, where the kerosene will mix that up to be more, you know, more like something you'd have as a heater in the middle of the, the living room type stuff.
All right, thank you. I would move that we accept the Champlain Valley non-bid for diesel, that we go with that vendor. Is that what you have decided about anything? The variable rate, basically, of Champlain Valley.
Do we have a second?
I'll do a second.
Second from Doug. Any additional questions?
Is there, is it actually, like, when you asked them, like, what the price quote is, did they, did you get a, so like, say, locking into one vendor, is it actually a dislike versus having the flexibility or?
I assume you could keep the flex, that's why I said you could keep that flexibility. Last year, last year was the first year where we did not do anything with the diesel because it was just so up in the air. Decided that it would just be a call around at that time.
But in theory, by locking it in, even though it's a variable price, you still, in theory, are getting a better price than if you just called them up on the day to get the fuel oil.
In theory, yeah, that you're getting, that they have to honor the, the rack plus the 12 cents.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor? It's unanimous.
And then the, the last one will be the propane bid. We didn't really do, do a bid because, as I explained in my email, Irving Oil owns our tanks. So for us to get out of that, we would have to buy the tanks from them. I think, a couple of years ago, me and Gary asked them how much it would cost to get those tanks back. And I think they said $30,000. So at this point, as long as they stay competitive with their pricing, there's really no need to revisit that. But they, they did bid a price for next year on 25,000 gallons of propane. And our propane is used at, for heating sources at Wallingford, Clarendon, yeah, Wallingford and Clarendon. And it's used by the kitchens at all the schools. The price was a dollar, 1.292 a gallon. It's, you know, quite a bit less than what they, what we had gotten charged last year, which was, I think, around about $1.79 or along those lines. And what that does for us budget-wise, again, it's a savings a little over $24,000 that we would, would, would achieve from that price. So our recommendation would be to accept the, the Irving bid for propane at a dollar, .292 a gallon. I'll make that motion.
There you go. Second. Any other questions?
I'm sure I asked this last year and I probably forgot. What's the life cycle of the tank? Like, so like, they own the tank, we get them for a bid. And then how long does this size tank last? And then when it comes, when like, it either has to be replaced or are we buying it slowly? Like, how does that work?
That's a good question that I've asked and haven't gotten a straight answer.
Depends on the ground that you're working in.
What happened was EEI was in charge of that, of the performance contract. And EEI has went out and did the bid for the, for who did, put the tanks into the ground. And Irving won that bid. So I guess I can reach out again to EEI to see if there was anything in the bid that requested that kind of, because that was our question at the time. I.
I feel like with like, gas stations, you see it's like, when they need to get a new tank, that's when they go out of business. Because it's just too expensive to like, redo that. So is that a thing that we're eventually going to be on the hook for? Or like?
Obviously, a caveat, but quick Google search says 20 to 30 years. But tanks can last longer depending upon the soil, the weather, and where installed. So.
How long have they been there, doing it?
We sent someone, we do, it was the 2019.
Four years?
Okay, so they're relative.
1920.
Okay.
So they got at least 15 more years.
There we go.
It is a good question, because I've seen, in my experience in the past, with clients I used to have that had propane tanks in the ground, they would have it written in that they could now switch vendors for like, 10 years or something along those lines. Which I, we had asked EEI and they, they did not really give us a direct answer in regards to that, if they had put that in the bid, or, you know, win that contract in term, so That's it?
So, any other questions? All in favor? Unanimous. You're good.
Thank you.
Okay, so next would be Technology/Curriculum Bid.
So this one is for Eureka Math. And this is something that you're seeing, not because it's new. I know we had a lot of conversation around social studies being new. This is a renewal. But it does trigger the threshold of purchases that have to go to the board for approval, if that makes sense. Jody, do you want to talk a little bit about it being used and how it's going and all that stuff?
I would love.
Or BJ, sorry.
I'm just paying.
Yep.
So it comes out of the technology budget because it is mainly an online program and we have some paper products that go along with it, if you're wondering about the interplay. and we have some paper products that go along with it, if you're wondering about the interplay between those. So we have been using Eureka Math for nine-ish years. Um, and we were trying to complement that with some PD from the All Learners Network. Eureka Math then really went into doing that same research-based stuff to add to Eureka Squared and that's why we chose to do this. What, the original purchase was from Esser Funds and then you guys did decide to add it to the budget because teachers' feedback was really positive and it's showing some increases in achievement. So teachers do want to keep using it. Now, we always want to be really thoughtful with local budgeting and so we specifically asked teachers, do you want every single part of it? Because we got the online licenses for teachers, for kids, and then it came with two books, Apply and Learn. Learn was for the classroom and Apply was like a homework book to go home. Teachers came back and said, you know, we didn't really use the Apply books, so we can cut those. And so that took, and this leads me to actually social studies, because I'm sorry I couldn't be here. My littlest one cared that I was at her concert strongly.
Well, yeah, we do, we do too.
Um, but, um, so this bid is for much less than the local amount of money that you put aside. And that is part of the dialogue around social studies. So when teachers started saying, we need a coordinated curriculum for social studies and you heard Mary Colvin, the middle school teacher, say, please, what we need is coordinated curriculum all the way up, um, I don't want to buy something just for a year. Um, and so by talking to teachers about what their needs were, they said, we need a little bit less of the math product, but we do need a social studies product. Now, because we had grant funding, we chose to spend that first. And we won't spend all of this local money, which means it'll go back into the coffers, um, like any other money that we don't spend in a year. But my hope is that by buying them the full social studies curriculum for this year, they will see what parts of it, just like with the math, that they need. So we're buying this online program for social studies that also has a notebook component because this year we can afford it. Now, if it's groundbreaking and the teachers really feel it's impactful, I will come to you and say, this is the data that we have from teachers. If teachers say, you know, we can actually get away with the online program now that we know what the journaling looks like and do journals and composition books, then we might be able to cut that piece. As it stands now, we'd be able to pay for K5 online and journaling with the money we're saving from Eureka from cutting that without any increases. Um, the, and honestly, our middle school global citizenship teacher who really, you know, I've been working really closely on this project, who says it's more important for her to see K5 curriculum than it is for her to have her own online program because for her, it's more about all of that support underneath for her. Now, I, I hope that it's going to be an amazing program and that I'll come back to you and ask for a slight increase to go up to six, seven, eight for next year. Um, but again, we're not going to spend money just to spend money and we do have this long-term plan that's really carved out of what we've got now. Is that, okay?
Yeah, thank you so much.
BJ, do you want to add anything about it being in the tech budget and how, how that budget looks and confidence for the future in that?
Um, sure. And the technology budget, I, does require me to coordinate with several departments. Um, I do talk with Tim, we share responsibility for the phone systems, um, and other systems, security and safety. I've been looking at some of the camera stuff too. So there's a lot of overlap with buildings and grounds. Um, and there's also a lot of overlap with curriculum. Uh, so when I build my budget at the, in November, yes, October, November, I am working with multiple depart, any department that I can work with to say, okay, here's what I have in my budget to spend. Does that look good? So that means is when Jody talks about some of the cost savings and some of the expenditures that happen in curriculum, the conversation maybe surrounding the technology budget in some cases. Other cases, especially if it's physical materials, I think a lot of that's coming out of your, it's in your budget.
Yeah, unless it's a hybrid, you know, then it might be either one of us. But if it's only paper-based, it stays.
So when you see those fluctuations, also this is a ask to approve through purchase renewal. Normally, there's a lot of bidding process. One of the reasons why you're just seeing great minds is, um, I think Jody did do a great job and the teachers, not too long ago, right?
Last year.
Last year, went through a process of looking at the different curriculums. So rather than going through that process again, just to get multiple quotes, which vendors, when you ask for quotes, really do try and get you to go through that process and bring people in and take a look. Um, since this is a renewal and we went through that process, we, it's approve the purchase of renewal. Any questions for Jody or I?
Might want to do motion, motion then discussion if there are.
So, um, I asked the board that makes a motion to, tonight, to approve the purchase of a renewal.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Nick. Any questions?
Um, I know we talked about it the last time we got together, but is there any benefit to looking at more than one set of licenses at a time? Like, I think this is one, multiple years. I, I know a lot of it has to do with budgeting, but if we look at staggering, which I know is a new concept. This year we do two years of math. Next year we do two years of social studies. The year after we do something else to get some cost savings in the licenses because you do get a cost savings when you buy multiple years.
Two-fold with that. One, Stan might be able to speak to purchasing things long-term, multiple years.
So from a curricular standpoint, you get the good discounts if it's six years? And at this point, I do not want to say six years because if you look at like, for example, our ELA curriculum was over four years ago that we were like, yes, Heinemann is the standard, right? And then the research said, actually, right? So I just, six years is a long time in the world of evidence-based curricular study.
Yeah.
And in regards to the questions of multiple years, it's not a problem with the general fund budget to go all purchase multiple years. It's only with the grant, if the grant period is only for one year, then the purchase can only be for one year. But the general fund can be three, four, five years, four licenses.
There's also logistics in timing that, those staggerings. Because if I was looking at a, even a three-year license of this, this would be not exactly three, three times, just under that, that we'd have to have in the budget. Then I'd have to make sure whatever else is also on the three-year cycle and the next one on the three-year cycle. And I can't guarantee that all of our social study, all of our curriculum programs are going to be on, it's not from the same company. So you guys could be stuck with me asking for an extra 50, $75,000 one year and then nothing the next year.
And then just one last point, we are being, we are parsing out fiscal responsibility to the point that like in this Eureka, we actually counted the actual number of kids and then just went up three for each grade level, just in case somebody moves into the district, so that we weren't purchasing any extra licenses. And so like, let's say that we purchased, you know, six years of seventh grade, we might, we'd have to go over 10 or 15, just to make sure that we could account for fluctuations between classes. And right now, we're literally only paying for those seats we've got.
And I think it was probably easier in the past too, if there was more padding in the budget. Then you had some flexibility and you had a little more discretion, so you could go, oh, this is the year with the big renewal, great. Oh, this is the year that I've got a little extra money, great, I can do that project. I can get some more interactive displays this year. Where our budgets are to the point that they don't have that padding.
Yeah.
Uh, if that makes sense.
And I don't think that's the end we want to be up on.
But that is where we are, yeah.
And those are, uh, discussions to plan for a curricular timeline. We're planning to have those discussions, but we haven't had those discussions yet.
Nick, I do have one other thing that Vermont is doing along that lines. Vitale is, does a lot of the conferences. They have set up a program where they have a consortium by purchasing. So there's a lot of programs that, um, like our Power School Employee Records, for example. Rather than each school that wanted it trying to say, I have 800 students, what's my cost here? Um, they're working together to go to the company says, we are Vermont, we have eight schools.
A volume discount, basically.
We have this many students. It's still a yearly thing, but we're looking at it from a year standpoint.
So instead of three years to get a discount, it's everybody in Vermont working together this year to get the discount, so.
So that is something that, and I've even recommended some companies, um, speak to them. So, and I'm starting to see some of those new companies. That is a very quickly growing thing.
Cool.
So.
I just have one question. So we're purchasing this for all the schools, the elementary schools. And so do we know for sure that all the teachers in the district are using what we're purchasing?
Yes.
Like, there's some sort of accountability for that?
Yes. So, um, this year's accountability was, um, surveying them about it, discussing it in faculty meetings, um, sharing student work samples at grade release times. We are increasing, um, I don't want to call it like top-down, a collective accountability because it shouldn't be like, you know, teachers, I don't want teachers to feel like, gotcha, like we're there with a clipboard, but I want to make sure that we have actual curriculum coordination. So, um, during their release time, in the half-day, as teachers started creating a, like, curricular maps for what should be covered each trimester of every single grade together. And Pat Bowen worked with teachers to parse out this Eureka, um, work last year and really put it into Power standards and help create those curricular maps. And then the next step, so some teachers from the curriculum work group are going to try to put together the Eureka maps with the Bookworms maps, with the Mystery Science maps that all of the grade levels did this year, and then start to work on that social studies too, with a goal being by the end of this year, we have, and hopefully by, you know, closer to mid-year, but, you know, just in case, I'm going to bump it out to the end of year, we actually have for every single grade level, a curriculum map for all four major subjects. And that's real big accountability because that means everybody has access to those and everyone in their grade team meetings is going to be discussing how it's going and where they are with it. It means principals, when they go in to do formal observations, actually have that map and can say, okay, so it's October, which of these topics are you currently on? Um, and I'm really hoping that teacher, because teachers are creating those and have ownership over those, it's not like top-down work that's going to get ignored in the day-to-day life of teachers, um, but that it's going to create a pacing guide, so everyone is on the same page. Hopefully, you know, five years down the line, that means when all of our seventh graders get together, they've all had the same learning experiences with the same standards that are high-quality and rigorous and that's going to start to build.
And all of that is the best way to approach that, or I won't say the best way, is a great way to approach that, not, let's find the one teacher who's not using it. But we generally have that capability. With digital tools, you can almost always go and look and see usage statistics. So we've definitely looked in the past to say, oh, wow, not a lot of people are using this. We need to ask them why. Oh, because it's not a valuable resource? Okay, great, then we don't need it. Uh, we're never looking for the three people not using it, but we are trying to think about, wow, if most of our teachers are using this, this must be working well, um, so let's keep supporting it. So we do have, uh, we actually have a lot of details sometimes about, you know, even how many specific things people are accessing online because it is a digital tool, if that makes sense.
Jody and I, even this year, on smaller scale items, have actually had that conversation already, so.
Nobody's using it.
There's also a push to align our assessment systems better to these curriculum maps. So there's been some great conversation about, you know, if we're going to change our local common assessment plan to align with Bookworms, it might be time to change the performance indicators at each grade level so that we are, everything is lined up. The more we coordinate, the more we buy it.
Awesome. Anything else?
So the only thing that I would say to like Nick's point of, and what we were talking about last time, and if we are going to try to go into a shifting funding pool is, like, the next time there is a quote like this, maybe just show, like, ask for a two or a three year, just so that we can see what that looks like. Because there's a threshold that maybe we decide, okay, it's not worth a discount to be, to lock in.
In other words, if you're saving $2,000, are we really, is that a big deal?
Right, and then we can say...
It could be a misconception on our part, like, what is the, the savings on one versus two versus three years? Maybe, maybe it's nothing.
Uh, keep in mind from a board standpoint, uh, we can do that. You need to have that conversation in the finance committee of budget time.
Well, that's what we're trying, we're, we're trying to figure out a plan for how we are going to go forward with budgeting and some of that might be a rolling fund that subjects get.
So Josh, for example, when I did the TCI one, they, they always send you a multi-year because they're trying to upsell, right? So I have the one year and the six year, so I'd be happy to send that over to the board just as a already existing piece of evidence.
They don't care about a three-year or a two-year. Like that, because it's like, I feel like six years is like, we're prob, we're never going to buy into a six-year.
Yeah, well, we can always go back and ask for it. But I hear you, next time I do a large-scale curriculum bid, I'll say, like, next year's Eureka up. I'll say, hey, parse out the same numbers for three.
Well, right. And, and I think an interesting thing, I, I totally appreciate that the board would like that for their awareness so that they can think about the overall budgeting process. I, I wonder if BJ was kind of getting at, well, if we, if we bring you a quote, we've already budgeted for it. So if you save $3,000, that didn't do anything to the budget. So BJ's recommendation is going to be one year over three year because, because that supports the work we're doing best. So saving a couple thousand dollars actually might not support BJ's work in tech and on the budget. Does that make sense?
It does, but I don't know how much we're saving or not saving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, I think the awareness is great, but I still think the recommendation, I think we need to be mindful of honoring recommendations and knowing that there's really a reason for that. We're not trying to waste a couple thousand dollars, but sometimes there are a lot of moving parts behind why that recommendation still might be one year. Is that, is that?
Yeah, and that's why I suggested the finance committee in November, when you're talking about budgets, might be a good time to get some examples of that. So there, everything that I have in my software budget, they would be more than happy to give us a three-year, um, thing in there.
But we can, we can start bringing that to raise awareness, absolutely.
But I budget for that one year versus three year in November for the following July.
And, yeah, and I totally understand that, but we're fundament, we are discussing a fundamental change in how we are planning budgeting.
Yeah.
So if we're going to try to start doing that in the budgeting process, like, if we're already in November, then that is late in the game for that year.
That's early in the game, that's planning for the following year though.
So basically, what's going to happen is Brian's going to have these conversations with Jody and Bjorn and building leaders and then come to the finance committing.
But I absolutely appreciate that the board would like to know that information.
And I will say as a public school teacher myself, that we absolutely want to defer to the expertise of our classroom teachers or building and, uh, building administrators. You know, my content area, as someone who just purchased a seven-year license on a product, my content's not going to change in seven years at all.
Right.
Right? And that's my content area and I had the funding to make that purchase. And that's what I wanted and my, my content's not going to change. However, elementary education, especially in best practices around everything, math, reading, social studies, science, it changes probably on a yearly basis. And so we will absolutely defer to your expertise in supporting what you believe is best for our students. And we want to know, just for budgeting purposes, you know, min-max, so to speak, minimum budget, maximum budget, because that is what we have to go to the public with. And we want to be... And we want to be as accurate as possible, so that we're funding the thing. Yeah.
I think, I'm going to echo what Paul said last, last meeting. I would like to hear from some of the teachers who are promoting this program, not just the, not just the administration. I want to hear the teachers say, yes, we read it, we've seen it, we really like it, we're going to go buy it.
Well, you'll recall, Mary Colvin came to talk to us, and she made it clear that the middle school social studies teachers wanted to see their incoming students with more content knowledge, more, more skills, more skills sets in that content area. And so, you know, this, we're seeing it happening now.
What I did is, I took, I met with Mary, I said, what programs do you think are great? I asked Sabrina McDonough, I asked a couple different teachers, I asked the Curriculum Work Group, are there any companies out there you think are really excellent in this? And then I picked the top three that aligned to New England's scope and sequence, because Vermont does not have one. So I chose Massachusetts and Connecticut's. And then I checked, Massachusetts spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on a big material review, and so I read through their documents. And then I parsed that to the top three, linked the websites and sample curriculums in, and sent it out to the entire district staff, and said, please weigh in openly, so everyone else can read their comments, so it's not like private to me, so it doesn't look like I'm really holding it, and we'll go with the majority. And this is, this was the majority. So like, if, if it would be helpful, for example, like, I could take some of the comments and take those out of there and email those comments about this to the board.
I don't think we need to look backwards, I think what Bruce is, is lifting up that Paul originated, was that what we just went through with Mary Colvin speaking with the board, and then you're carrying, you know, the message of those teachers, we want to see more of that moving forward.
I would like to see Mary Colvin or the teachers themselves, if they're strongly for it, I don't want to hear it necessarily from just the administration, I want them, yes, we need this, please. And I think... Mary was talking about, we want continuity, and that's been wanting for a long time.
I think there's a, there's a very logical place for that to happen.
But I'm not sure that Mary was talking about this particular program. She was just talking about good continuity.
So this year, we have heard our educators at the board talk about Bookworms and how that's been a positive program. We've heard them talk about Mystery Science and how that's been positive, that was Tinmouth, some of our teachers spoke to that. I, maybe, I don't remember Eureka Math coming up, but I think what we can absolutely do is encourage our teachers, when they come and they give their presentations, remember the frame of their presentation is, what's working, what's not?
Yeah.
What are we trying and how do we know it's working? And I think, great that Mystery Science came up and Bookworms came up through those conversations, we can absolutely talk to our staff in the fall and say, hey, can you speak to that new program when you give your presentation? I think that, that, we already have a place where that can happen. Because what I don't want to do is say, hey, teachers, this is up for renewal, you need to come, you need to come...
Pitcher.
Ask for it again.
Yeah.
I, I, I feel like that feels different to educators than, show us what you're doing and tell us about your work, versus, oh, this is up for renewal, somebody's got to come back and convince us. You know, that, does that make sense, how that feels different, but we can get the same information? Okay.
I mean, I personally, if this, this were to ask you, I would like to see a department chair, who's in touch with the department, come up and present, this is what we did, and this is how it, how it worked out.
Social Studies Department, if we want to follow a similar schedule that we did this year, Social Studies Department will present to the board, English Department will present, Science will present, Math will present, from 7:12. Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Would it be possible to get a refresher on the motion, just because it was kind of a long discussion?
That would not hurt.
So we all make sure we're on the same page here?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. I asked the board to make a motion tonight to approve the purchase of a renewal for Greater Minds K-12 for $17,770.80.
Now, we do have a motion that was made, we do have a second. All in favor? That is unanimous, so you're all set.
Thank you.
So we are going to move along to committee reports, we will start with Personnel.
Yes. Excuse me, I'm too quiet. We have a couple of contracts to bring before the, we met tonight, before this meeting, so we have a couple of contracts to bring for board approval. The first one is a contract for Heather Kent, for, as a K-12 Special Education Teacher, 1.0 FTE, and you said Clarendon?
Yes, I believe the assignment at this point is Clarendon.
Yeah, okay. So I would make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Discussion?
Can we just put in there that it is contingent?
Contingent, yeah. Yes.
Contingent upon provisional license, which we've worked with the Agency of Education, and she qualifies for one, she just has some stuff she has to follow through on to actually receive that provisional. Good addition to the...
It actually, actually says that on the...
Yeah, contract.
On the contract.
But for public knowledge, I think that's important.
Ah, yep.
All in favor?
Thank you. Next is a contract for support staff, central business offices, for Connie Erickson as Maintenance and Transportation Assistant, 1.0 full-time equivalency. And I would make that a motion.
Motion, I'll like, I saw a second.
Okay. Discussion?
I believe there's an error in the dates.
Could be.
It says it's beginning 7/123, ending 6/30/23.
6/30/24, we'll fix that.
Good catch.
We're on discussion.
Otherwise, it's a, the contract's negative a month.
Yeah. You're getting paid for that, there's a problem. We're on discussion, right?
Yes.
I think the great thing about this is that Connie has a CDL.
Great.
So that, now we have a Transportation Coordinator who has a CDL. And if something happens in the morning, and Connie needs to run a bus route, she can run a bus route. So we've got another built-in backup bus driver, which I think is fantastic. I shared with Personnel, we have a bus driver higher in the works, actually, so that the next Personnel meeting we have, we will be bringing another bus driver to the board, which I think is a great place to be. Does it get us out of the woods as far as transportation goes? No. But it means that next year will look better than this year. After next year, I really think we're still going to be in the same shape, we're still going to be scrambling to try and find people, and when we find people, we're going to work really hard to, to keep them. But I do think having a backup plan, a Transportation Coordinator with a CDL puts us in a better position. We also have some other folks on staff, Maintenance Custodial Crew, who are interested in exploring CDLs.
Great.
The board has put funding in the budget to cover the cost of CDL courses, so we're going to keep working on that, too. So I think, good news that while this has been hard to pull off, we are making some positive moves.
I think the other thing, just to mention, is that a new job description...
Yes.
...has been done on this position, because it's now a 1.0 full-time equivalency. And I think that's another advantage in terms of having this person in the building all day.
Those transportation concerns that pop up later in the day, we've got somebody who can now cover those. And it was great that Tim had the experience of a lot of this year, to see what was working and what wasn't, so that we could update the job description. Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
In the job description, I'm just curious, did the name of this assignment change?
Yes.
Because it says Maintenance Transportation Assistant, but Coordinator just makes more sense if it's...
Oh.
If she's like the head of the department, she's not really an assistant.
Let me, let me see what that actually officially was. I think we did change it to Assistant, and I think the thinking was that she wouldn't, Connie wouldn't be the Maintenance Coordinator. You could maybe say she was a Transportation Coordinator, but Assistant made more sense to cover both of those roles, if that makes sense.
So she reports to Tim?
Yep. Absolutely. So, so Tim oversees all of the Maintenance Operations Transportation work, Connie would be doing...
Assistant Coordinator?
Well, I mean, I don't know that the title...
I don't know, do you, when you, when you're talking about it, you keep saying Coordinator, so I don't know...
And I probably keep saying that just because that's what it's been this year.
Okay.
When I say Transportation Coordinator, yeah, sorry, sorry.
So she's basically the assistant to Tim, when it comes to this type of stuff?
Absolutely. And the job description outlines a lot of things that are coordination activities, but I think not all of the job is coordinating. Some of the maintenance pieces are really like more of an assistant role, if that makes sense. But no, I do keep saying Coordinator, because that's what it's been. This year, it's just been Transportation Coordinator, not the Maintenance Piece. We had the Maintenance Piece as part of that job, you know, go back, I think, two years, and it, it was part of that job for a while, so we've added that back in.
And if she gets into a bus, then she gets the sub-rate for the bus?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so that, that's a great point to bring up. If she subs on a bus, she is now a bus sub, and she is not working as, as this role. Yeah. Because to compensate her at $23 an hour to drive a bus, wouldn't be appropriate. Good, good point, good question.
Any other questions, discussion? Did we get a second on that?
I think we did, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thanks. All those in favor? Close. Okay. There you have it. That's all I have. We'll be discussing the next Personnel Committee meeting when we get down to agenda building.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along to policy.
One of the things that we're trying to do in policy is streamline our policies, and, because I think a lot of them are left over from the merger, a lot of them maybe had a very particular circumstance, that may be not relevant anymore. And so part of our plan for the policy, to be able to actually review all the policies, is trimming them down.
Trimming them down, developing a schedule for how often and which ones will be reviewed, and part of that was putting forth a bunch for rescindment.
And how that process went was basically, we're looking at School Board Association, what have they done? Have they gotten rid of that policy? Have they ever had that, you know, and we're not, there's some that will, we won't do that with, like, we have a school handbook policy that the Policy Committee feels is important. The Association doesn't have one of those. And so like, there are certain ones that are, it doesn't matter if they have it or not, where we would keep it, because we feel it's important for the school district. And so this list is one of the first batches of those rescinding. Anyone has any questions on any of the policies, we can probably get an answer.
Do you have a, another meeting scheduled?
We are meeting next Tuesday, at the same, I don't, what time do we do two meetings now?
5:30.
Okay. Is that, BNG is at 5:00? Is there overlap in those committees?
I don't know, we'll, we'll probably run past 5:30, because we have a pretty big thing of, things to talk about, so we have a pretty long list.
Five years' worth of stuff, I hear.
That, that and a lot of more things that you need to take...
The email got out last night?
Yesterday.
Oh, gotcha.
And so...
Thank you, okay.
Well, we don't, so, but if it doesn't work, then we should, if that's too close of a time, we should either...
I wonder if Tuesday, if Tuesday at 6:00 might be a better tentative plan, and then...
If they can do 6:00, that would work a lot better, because that'll, that'll cover us.
You do 6:00?
6:00 actually works better for me.
Let's push it to 6:00, then.
And committee members, we just, we have those two things that just came out from the state that we have to adopt by August 1st, in the hopes of a records retention policy.
Crazy timeline. Yeah, and I think we had them on the agenda for this time.
Yep, we did. So we want to just plan for 6 o'clock, then?
Does that work for warnings and all that stuff?
Yeah, we can warn it, yeah.
Are we still up for having policies in the Herald for rescinding?
Yeah, we need a motion and accept these for...
Rescindment?
Yeah.
Do you have to do them individually?
Say you could do them as a group?
Unless there's questions, I would throw it out as a group. So I'm going to make a motion that we rescind C4, C5...
Warren rescindment.
Oh, Warren rescindment, for C4, C5. For some reason, it's C6R, D15, and E10.
Second.
Questions or anything?
All in favor?
Discussion?
Any more questions? All in favor? You're good.
Awesome. And Pam's got those queued up with the Rutland Herald, so that we'll be all set for 10 days being in the Herald. Yeah.
All right. So moving along to Buildings and Grounds, we, we do have a meeting scheduled next Tuesday the 20th, at 5:00. We have a fairly large agenda, including a five-year plan for all the, for the district. So if you want to have some fun, come on over.
Hey, Matt?
Yes.
I've been sort of, had some problems with the truck, so I was under there, and the, I guess the, the little bugs that bite you and make you sick.
The ticks?
Yeah, and, in nine days, I had 11 come onto me.
Oh, no.
Two of them bit me pretty badly, so I'm sort of trying to go, my problem is that I took some time, I took some walking around. I don't think I want to waste state, the district, but one of our districts has stuff on the outside that is extremely, extremely ugly-looking, and parts are good, but the other parts not. And there's another issue, from what I heard, and I'm not so sure it's even true, about something with the heating system for Mill River. I want to sort of do a research, and I'm going to come to the committee with some ideas of what we're going to do. I just, it's, I don't know, it's the crazy stuff we go through.
We can add things to the agenda, so don't worry, feel free to come on in.
I'll write some stuff up, and we can throw them in.
Please do. We'll take care of it.
So that would be the 20th at 5:00, so. Community engagement.
I don't believe we had a meeting.
Okay. Moving along, is, is there anything scheduled going out?
Don't believe so.
Okay.
If, if another community engagement committee member wanted to schedule something, I'm sure we could.
Okay.
We just need an agenda to warn it.
All right, well, if the committee wants to talk and let us know, we'll get something scheduled.
Who's on that committee? I know I'm on that committee. Okay, so, hold on, so Nick, Liz, Cindy, that's it? And Sam? That's it?
I think that's it. It's Shabur?
Oh, isn't, isn't Paul on there?
Yes, Paul's on.
Paul Garland's on there.
Paul and Sam, okay.
And group email for the purpose of picking a time and a date, totally fine, but shouldn't be discussion beyond that.
Yep.
Just a reminder.
Yep. It would be great to get that committee back up and running again.
So, so it's permissible to set, for one of the members to send out an email to the other members to say, do we want to schedule a meeting? Okay. I can do that.
Thank you.
It's actually, it's not Paul, it's Bruce, on community engagement.
Okay, there you go.
Sam, Cindy, Liz, Nick, Bruce.
You're on community engagement.
I think when we did reorg...
No way.
Okay.
Policy.
No way.
Personnel.
Personnel.
It could be an error, it could be.
We'll, we'll look into it for you.
Right.
All right, so, moving along to negotiations, the last time we held a negotiations meeting would have been for reorg back in March. And one thing that we discussed was, once school let out in June, we would call another meeting, so, who's... So who's on? I know I'm chair of it.
Len, Sam, Cindy, Josh.
So we should...
Make a time, and I can...
So I'm gone the next two weeks. I don't come back until July 2nd.
I mean, realistically, that's not that far out, so. I'm going to get July 4th that week.
What about the next week?
Can we do, can anyone do maybe July 11th, which would be the next Tuesday?
Is that the...
I cannot. I'm actually going on vacation in July. Which, you know, you could absolutely meet without me. I think the...
I think it's best if you're there.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I think so. Because I think we need to discuss some things, like how are we going to approach negotiations? Who's going to be involved? And how are we going to set up kind of roles responsibilities? We've had superintendent involved in the past. We've had, you know, lawyers involved in the past. We've had superintendent not involved in the past. So I think, yeah, you're right, I probably should be.
So, I mean, if you're gone until the 2nd, and then you're gone the week after the 4th.
Yeah.
So we could either do, I mean, I don't know what people's plans are. We could either do late, like, you know, July 6th?
Late summer is fine if everybody's comfortable with that. We would not start negotiations until sometime after the school year ramps up. We just need to set some priorities and goals for ourselves before I think we get into the school year. I just think it'll be harder to do once we get going. And I really think we want to start negotiating sooner rather than later, because we've got a year to do it. But gosh, not having a contract negotiated by, like, May doesn't feel great for people.
Well, having been on the negotiations committee the last now three years...
It can take a long time.
We've had some that have gone fast, we've had some that have dragged out. So we need to maximize our time. How about, can anyone, can everyone do Tuesday, July 18th? Maybe like 5:00? It's the week you get back.
We're likely looking at a July 19th board meeting.
There's only one week in August is the only thing I can't do.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm available the 18th. You said you're available the 18th.
Okay.
Want to shoot for Tuesday, July 18th, 5:00?
Sure.
Good.
I'm going to put it in my calendar right now, so I can't say I forgot.
Get it on board calendar, too.
You can witness, we can see you did.
Awesome. Thank you for remembering that, Matt.
You're very welcome. I remember some things.
Hey, if we all remember some things, then it works.
All right. So it's in my calendar. So moving along, we are now on to finance.
Good evening, everyone. We have the following payroll for approval this evening. Dated June 1st, we have regular payroll in the amount of $6,783.41. Dated June 2nd, we have regular payroll in the amount of $602,280.19 for a grand total of $609,063.60. We have the following pay orders from the general fund. We have a pay order in the amount of $122,973.86. We have a J. Wilson Scholarship Pay Order in the amount of $1,150. From our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $55.23. From our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,185.14. And from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $7,874.11 for a grand total of $135,238.34. From our student activities accounts from Mill River, we have a pay order in the amount of $20,907.26. From Clarendon Elementary, we have a pay order in the amount of $422.29. And from Tinmouth Elementary, we have a pay order in the amount of $749.38 for a grand total of $22,078.93. From our student activities accounts, and I move that we accept and approve payroll and these pay orders as presented. May I have a second?
A second, then.
Thank you. Any discussion? See, it's so nice that everybody gets the check registers, because everybody can see all the things. So thanks, everybody. All those in favor of approving payroll and these pay orders as presented? That's everyone. Thank you so much. The next meeting of the Finance Committee is Thursday, August 31st, at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
What's the location for that?
Mill River. Yes, thank you. And there will be, I believe, a hybrid option. We're still doing that, yes? Yeah.
If we're at Mill River, absolutely.
Super.
Perfect.
Transact other legal business. Now, we do have to give me the right to sign things.
And I think it's payroll warrants are all we need tonight.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you so much. Thank you, Matt.
I'll throw one other thing in, transact other legal business, talking about hybrid. BJ has been working on a hybrid setup that we could rotate among the other schools. So he's working up a proposal and costs for that. So that might be something I'd bring to the board in the summer, just to look at, if that makes sense. So that request was there. BJ's been working on it. We'll have something to bring.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Looking forward to it.
Yep.
Is there, I don't, it might not have, you might not know it yet, but how, is there a response rate yet for how many people have done those surveys?
You know, when I looked at it last, before I sent the reminder, so probably late last week, I looked at it, it was a similar response rate to what we had at the end. So, you know, we still have a little time for folks. It hasn't gone down, so I'm hopeful that it will go up after the reminder. So we'll see.
What's the deadline for the reminder?
Deadline is end of the week, last student day. Yeah, so folks still have a little time.
Okay.
Okay. Agenda building.
We have, on our big yearly annual plan, a couple of things left. A five-year facilities plan, which I think would be great for that to happen at B&amp;G next week. And at our next board meeting, we're able to share that with the full board. Our assessment goals update, we would be doing as well. So checking in on local star testing that our folks are wrapping up this week, believe it or not. And then sports update, our final quarterly sports update. Those are the three items I have off that schedule. Are there other things we would need to do at our next board meeting?
Do we have...
When is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, when is our next meeting?
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
So we have a couple of options. We've had a kind of funky schedule, because we set our June dates a little differently, not 1st and 3rd, to accommodate graduation on a Wednesday. We could do another June board meeting. Business office has some things that we would need signatures on. We don't need a full meeting. We could just get signatures from Board Chair. If we wanted a meeting on the 28th of June, we could do a meeting on the 28th of June. The next regularly scheduled meeting would be July 5th. And we typically don't do a meeting the July 4 week. We typically only do one July meeting. So the next July meeting would be 7/19. So, and I think that's 6/28. If we wanted to do another June meeting, we could do another June meeting.
Okay, Mike, I have a question.
Yep.
Because we have a board retreat on the 22nd?
Yeah.
Would it make sense, and would it be, you know, feasible to have the next board meeting after the retreat on the 26th? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, instead of the 19th?
Because, right, because...
I'd be totally cool with that, because the 19th is my birthday.
Oh, my gosh!
While I love the district, I would be comfortable with not meeting my birthday.
I would prefer to have the meeting after the retreat. I think that's best. Because that way we can...
And I'm also just thinking, one of the, because I can see Brian's notes.
Does that throw the business office off? If we don't do a July 19, we do a July 26? Get the chair to sign some things as needed.
Just because I can see your notes. Because we have on our list of things, assessment and goals. I think maybe the goals piece will be, I mean, are these all things we're covering on our next agenda?
Yeah, I think likely.
Is that feasible? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Because goals...
With no school presentation, I think, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Because the goals piece will be possible, well, yes, it will definitely be informed by the work we do on the 22nd.
Sure, sure. So not only could we do, yeah, not only could we do, here's how the goals went last year, but here's our update on where we're going next year. Yeah, yeah.
I think an August can absorb, because then we wouldn't do the 2nd, because the 2nd would be the first Wednesday, because normally we do 1st and 3rd, right? So then we could skip, but then you do the 9th, the 23rd, and then September, you go back to being regular. Right? Because otherwise, you know, if it's a normal one...
So July 26, and then August 9...
So does anybody see a need for another June meeting? Or are we comfortable meeting July 26? Then we will have had some retreat time. We'll be able to give some pretty, I think, some good summer updates around five-year B&amp;G plan, around strategic planning, goals, how we accomplished some of our work this year, where we're going next year. That'll be a good...
I'd like to have a Personnel Committee meeting that night beforehand.
We'll need one.
Because at that point, I would hope that we'd have your evaluation pretty well buttoned up.
I would hope so, too.
Yeah.
7/26, 6:00 p.m. Full hour for that. Okay.
When was the August retreat that we...
The 12th.
12th.
Oh, okay, all right. I was looking for my, like, save the dates, so...
So the next...
The 9th to 12th.
Personnel Committee meeting?
7/26.
Okay.
At 6:00 p.m. Other things on the agenda? Not that we can't add things later, but I'll do my normal coordinating with Andrea and Matt on agenda building.
More of a question than an agenda. Maybe it ends up on the agenda. Two or three meetings ago, we had a short discussion about the bleachers.
Yep.
And how we couldn't get rid of them, nobody wanted them.
That's on B&amp;G agenda, right?
It's on the B&amp;G agenda.
That'll come through on that.
Yeah, that's, one of the agenda items for our meeting is actually an update on the Mill River bleacher situation.
They're working on it, yeah. So they should have something. Good, good thing to remember.
B&amp;G, 6/20, okay.
Okay.
All right. So do we have an executive session tonight?
None that I'm aware of.
Oh, come on.
All right, well...
But that being said, sure. Let's move to adjournment at 8:43.